I ask you that this church, each and every one of us, guide us in the way that you have us to go. Give us strength to accomplish the things we're trying to do. And touch our mayor, Father, she's our leader. Crown her head with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. So this road that we're traveling will be smoother with your guidance. Bless us, keep us, and protect us. These are all blessings I thank in your darling and son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Attention. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving forward, we're down to item number three under announcements. And I think that's quite fitting. We have a special presentation from one of our very own, Mayor Jamie Mayo. Thank you so much. I'm gonna move on to item number four because I think the announcement in your item coming next just make for a great gateway to this first meeting. So we will receive our very own, the Honorable Jamie Mayo from Monroe to make this special presentation. And when he makes his presentation, then I will step down and join him. Let's receive him.
Thank you very much, Mayor Arthur Olive. I'm getting used to saying that. I am Jamie Mayo, Mayor of the City of Monroe. And I, first of all, want to take this opportunity to congratulate you, Mayor, on your new job, and also to congratulate each and every one of you. I know you're very, very excited. The City of Bastrop has spoken in a mighty way. And I know you are looking forward to serving. And I'm here to make a special presentation. But before I do, I would like to say that all of you know, I believe most of you know, that I am a native of Moorehouse Parish, and specifically Bastrop. And it's good to be home because there is no place like home. And several years ago, maybe 10 or 15 years ago, I had the honor of graduating from Bastrop High School and participating in many athletic events, specifically basketball, where we won state championship. And I believe it was the last state championship. I have been one and delighted to see Mr. Alan Tansy, who also was on that team, and Chief Montgomery that was on that team as well. So I have some teammates that are here today. In addition to having played football a long time ago and played quarterback. Now, I know you've forgotten about Mayo because you've had guys like Mackey and Randall that have come here, so I do understand that. But I'll move right along. I did wanted to come here because I did want to make a special presentation. And I had the honor of talking to former Mayor Clarence Hawkins about this opportunity for the City of Bastrop because we all are very concerned about what took place as relates to International Paper. And we don't have to go into all of that. But as a hub city and mayor of the hub city, I want everybody to know that we're very, very much involved and concerned about regional economic development. And that is what it's all about. And being the mayor of the hub city of the region, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we work with all of the cities, towns, and villages throughout the region to make that happen. So I presented to our city council a proposal to assist the City of Bastrop in your effort to come back, if you will, from this unbelievable blow that the City of Bastrop, Moorehouse Parish, and our region received on the notice that was given by International Paper. So we have economic development funds, and we've done quite well with those funds. And we've been able to attract many jobs. And they have been in the news, such as Garnet Denver Thomas, as well as the late, the latest presentation that's been made, or announcement. And that is with the V Vehicle Company, as well as CPSI, and of course ACCENT, that's a call center. And of course, we know what's going on with Century Tail, now Century Link, and also Chase with their growth. So I presented to the city council a proposal to bring tonight just a small amount that will assist you in your effort as you make a determination as to how you will move forward in your economic development opportunities. So I would like to read pretty quickly the ordinance that was approved by the city council. This is an ordinance authorizing James E. Mayo, Mayor, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the City of Bastrop and further providing with respect thereto. Whereas the City of Monroe is in support of economic development in the City of Monroe and the surrounding area. And whereas the City of Bastrop's major employer, International Paper, has indefinitely closed, which will impact the economy in Monroe. And whereas the City of Bastrop has entered into an agreement with the State of Louisiana Department of Economic Development to implement a redevelopment plan for the City of Bastrop and the surrounding area, which will help the economy in Monroe and assist in economic development in Bastrop and the surrounding area. Whereas the City of Monroe is willing to enter into the attached cooperative endeavor agreement with the City of Bastrop with funds from the Administrative Economic Development Fund, all as per the attached agreement, which is attached heretofore and made a part hereof. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council and the City of Monroe, that James E. Mayo, Mayor, is hereby authorized to enter into the attached cooperative endeavor agreement with the City of Bastrop, and James E. Mayo is further authorized to sign all necessary documents to accomplish the same. This ordinance was introduced on the 24th day of March 2009. And the notice was published on the 30th day of March 2009. And the ordinance was adopted and declared on the 14th day of April 2009, Robert E. Stevens, Chairman. And I'd like to ask Mayor Olive to come down as I make this presentation. And in addition to talking to Mayor Hawkins, I had an opportunity as well to talk to Mayor Olive. And she was very supportive of the idea, and I appreciate that. And I wanted to be one of the first to come here with my chairman and make this presentation. Now, I want to let you know right now that we don't have a life-size check to present to you. But we do have a check that we brought. And I believe they approved $250... No, it wasn't $250. $2,500. And we'll... No, it wasn't $2,500. We have a check for you for $25,000 that we'd like to present to the City of Bastrop. And I'm gonna ask our Chairman of the Council, Councilman Stevens, to make some comments as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations to you again, Mayor. And to this distinguished council and clerk, it was a no-brainer. When family members in distress, the other family members come to their aid. We in Monroe are not self-centered. We are regionally bound to help the area. Because as we help you, we help Monroe too. So it was not... It was no problem. It was a unanimous vote. All of the council members were happy to do it. What I would like to add, I'm also the President of North Delta Regional Planning. And through the EDA, we are pretty sure that we've already secured it, but $2.1 million in your efforts. So it's a pleasure working with you, and we look forward to seeing you coming back. You may be down, but we know you're not out. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. I accept this presentation on behalf of this Board of Alderpersons and all the predecessors that worked so hard to make this possible. We have economic development agencies within our parish. And we are going to survive. And I want to thank Mayor Mayo. He was one of the first calls that I got after the campaign. And he congratulated me, and he referred to me, "You are now my mayor." And I thank him for putting his arms around us. Thank you, Mayor Mayo. Thank you, Councilman Stevens.
I forgot to tell you, you're my queen.
And also, this natural-size check is fine because I don't think they will take the life-size check at the back. Thank you so much. And I'm going to present this check to our city clerk. Okay, at this time, let's do a roll call, thanking my enthusiasm.
Mr. Moore?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Nathan?
Present.
Mr. Armstrong?
Present.
Mr. Locke?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Let us give our mayor from Bastrop, who is now the mayor of the City of Monroe, a round of applause. Wasn't that absolutely wonderful? And also to Councilman Red Stevens. We are going to do exactly what we are supposed to with this money. Moving right along, we have our Finance Committee reporting. At this time, I will call for a motion to adopt Resolution 091286 on bills and claims for the month of June 2009.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? It has been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's look at item number five. You've had an opportunity to peruse the minutes from the previous council meeting. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number seven, Resolution 091287. A resolution commending Mayor Clarence W. Hawkins for 20 years of dedicated service as mayor for the City of Bastrop, Louisiana. Is Mr. Hawkins present tonight? He's not here? Okay. You have had an opportunity to review that resolution. I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
A second.
It has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Okay, after proper signatures, we will make sure that Mayor Hawkins receives his resolution. Number eight, a Resolution 091288. A resolution commending Beulah Boo Robinson for six years of dedicated service to the City of Bastrop, Louisiana. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Moore?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Are there any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, a Resolution 091289 commending Eddie Gordon for four years of dedicated service to the City of Bastrop. Is Mr. Gordon present? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Nathan. Second?
A second.
Second by Obie Johnson. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution, item number 10, Resolution 091290. A resolution commending Willie Lenore for 20 years of dedicated service to the City of Bastrop. Is Mr. Lenore present? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I so move.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, Resolution 091291. A resolution commending Arthur Hamlin for 32 years of dedicated service to the City of Bastrop. Mr. Hamlin present? I'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Item number 12, Ordinance 094192. An ordinance authorizing the borrowing by the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, of $1,500,000 by the issuance of its revenue anticipation note, better known as RAN. At this time, I will ask Mr. Bill Bowles if he will speak to item number 12.
Your Honor, Mayor, Council. I'm Bill Bowles of Bowles Law Firm, bond counsel to the City of Bastrop. What you're asked to consider tonight is ordinance, introduction of the ordinance. As you recall, we have been... We have introduced a resolution for you previously. And this, I described it last month when I was here. But some of you, you weren't in your... You were in an official capacity, but not the same official capacity. But this is for the annual cash flow borrowing. This is the actual ordinance passed that introduced the ordinance. And this is the new procedure here with the city. And we didn't have last year, but where we introduced, and then we'll actually pass it at the next meeting. So we introduced the ordinance. And there are blanks in the ordinance. This is the way these are done because typically, they're very time-sensitive. You don't know who the... I mean, we, in the bond world, this is probably one of the few places you'll see this, but where you have an ordinance introduced where you don't have it actually fully complete. Where we'll actually determine through the financial advisors to the city who is the low bidder. This is informally bid out to the various financial institutions in the city. And the last year, it was Capital One, who is your main depository relationship. And so I expect rates to be as good, or better, even better than last year or so. And last year's rate was 3.13. And you borrow this money for just a short period of time. It's called to be paid back by March 31 of next year. And so this evens out your money. This is something many, many, many communities do because your cash is tax-sensitive. And the taxes come in at the end of the year. And towards the middle of the year, you get kind of... It gets kind of low. And so this is done, we did it for many years up in Monroe until Mayor Mayo came along. And so we don't do that anymore. But at any rate, if you have any questions, but that's the introduction of the ordinance. It will be back, and you will have a public hearing for the... Correct, Mr. Lawrence. You'll have a public hearing at the finance, basically, right before the meeting, next meeting. And in August, we'll ask that you adopt this. And it'll be completed at that time with the rate and who's the buyer. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that for you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bowles? Mr. Lawrence? What would be proper and fitting for us in that we have to have a public hearing? Do we need to let this lay over? Do we need to take an action tonight?
You need to, as Mr. Bowles indicated, it needs to... It's for introduction tonight. And what we need to do, as soon as you and the Board of Alderpersons settle on the August date, we can notice it in the newspaper and give advance notice regarding a public hearing, which we can set to be, say, at 5:45 PM, preceding the regular meeting date for this body in August. That would be, unless Mr. Bowles knows of something to the contrary where that's not proper.
Okay. Ms. Goldman, you make a note of that and keep us on task. Thank you so much. That's the extent of our action tonight, Mr. Lawrence.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. This leads into item number 13 on your agenda, Resolution 091292. A resolution giving preliminary approval to the incurring of debt and issuing of a sewer revenue bond, C-Rig 2009, in the amount of $1,510,550 for the City of Bastrop. Could you speak to that also, Mr. Bowles?
Well, Your Honor, thank you. In conjunction with that, and really the next item too, really deals with this. And this is... You all have been very fortunate to be allowed to participate in the state revolving, or not revolving, the state DEQ, Department of Environmental Quality program, wherein they'll make this money, this $1,500,000... I have my glasses. $1,510,550 available to you. And then over the period of time that you would have it out there, they forgive principal and interest. So in effect, it's like a loan. You have some cost to incur it. They're nominal. But then you have the DEQ forgives it. So it's, in essence, I get to sit up here and instead of telling you how much you got to pay back every year, I get to tell you it's actually free other than the cost to get it. And even those, again, those costs are down. So this is a great program. I have several other clients that are... Were lucky enough to participate. And I have many more that weren't. And so the resolution is simply, and you need to pass that tonight, to go to the Bond Commission, we are actually behind the deadline. And I called Treasurer Kennedy, and he allowed us to go on and be on the agenda. I didn't want to let any grass grow under this program for you. And he graciously consented that we're on the July Bond Commission meeting date. And then at the same time, we had asked that you go ahead, because of the new procedure, introduce the ordinance here so that you'll be in a position to access this money right after your meeting in August. And so at this time, we'd ask that you pass the resolution to take this $1,510,550 to the State Bond Commission for approval. And that we also, that you also act to introduce the ordinance associated with it.
Okay. Would you say that again, Mr. Bowles?
Yes, Your Honor, if you could pass the resolution to go to the Bond Commission for this matter. That's really the only formal action that's taken tonight.
I ask this council for a motion.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Locke. Second by Mr. Nathan. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Senator.
Okay, item number 14. Mr. Bowles, did you run that together with 14 and offer the clarity of the...
I think that 14, if your city attorney concurs, I think 14 is just, there's no formal action for the introduction, correct, Doug?
That's correct.
And that you'll have a hearing on that, just like you had... You're gonna have on the revenue anticipation note immediately prior to your next meeting.
Okay.
So, but like I said, the resolution is the only formal action that you had to take.
So we're good on that? Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, 14, do we need to do anything formal with this council present? Or we are...
What we'll do is notice it for a public hearing. At the same time that we do item number 12, we'll do both ordinances for a public hearing at that first meeting in August.
Okay. Thank you so much. Item number 15, Resolution 091293. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to enter into a contract with Coma Capital Investment LLC. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I make a motion that we adopt 091293.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. I'll entertain questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so very much. Item number 16, Resolution 091295. A resolution of the mayor and Board of Alderpersons of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to reduce the rate of compensation paid to the mayor by the sum of $10,000 and no sense effective July 1 and ending June 30 of 2010. That is a reduction in my compensation. And at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution 091295.
A second.
Has been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Nathan?
No.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Locke?
Aye.
Mayor passes four to one.
Motion carries, four to one. Item number 17, Resolution 091294. A resolution giving authority to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Moorehouse Parish Sheriff's Office for an ADKW generator. I had to look at that a second time. Okay, let's... Let's talk about the explanation of that. Chief Black, if you will come and offer an explanation.
I'll try. The generator was given to us, acquired through the Department of Homeland Security. Our local Homeland Security person, he's actually with the Sheriff's Office. He's deployed through the Sheriff's Office. However, he also handles this part of the job too. And they are giving us a generator. This generator will run our radio room and computers and I think some other offices in City Hall in case of a power failure. And it's able to handle a lot more than our current generator does. And in order to get the generator, we're also getting funds to set up the generator through Homeland Security. And to get those funds, we have to enter into this cooperative endeavor agreement with the Sheriff's Office. Because used to, the funds were handled through the police jury. Now they're handled through the Sheriff's Office. So it's just a matter of funneling the money from there to us to set up the generator. And really, that's all it is. They're gonna provide the money to do it. I'll hook it up and set it up.
Thank you, Chief Black. At this time, and certainly we still need... We want to make sure that our city operates the way it should under whatever conditions that are present. And at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Second.
Has been approved, motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? Discussion? Motion carries. Item number 18, Ms. Kay King, Moorehouse Parish, Economic Development.
The agenda was moving along pretty fast, so you caught me. I'd like to just first say that I appreciate the support that we're getting from the City of Monroe, that we... And some data that I'm gonna present to you. We'll see how significant the Bastrop area is to the City of Monroe. But Mayor Mayo and Red Stevens, that's kind of... They're my former employer, and I hope that I left in good standing. I tried not to burn any bridges when I left, so... But it is good to see them here, and it is good to have their support because Bastrop and Monroe are very intertwined. Up until on this last census, we were not considered part of the MSA, the metro area in Monroe. But in 2010, we believed that we will be because of the commuting patterns and the amount of interchange that we have of commerce between the two parishes. But... And in part of what we've been working on in the Economic Development Office, and we have been kind of... we have been, kind of, simply, we've been going along a little slow. We've been waiting for the new administration to get in, and so, it did kind of slow things down a little. But we have been doing our studies and, and working on determining what our product is. We have to know what our product is before we can sell it. And I'm going to pass out, this is some preliminary data. Thank you. This is a portion of some of the preliminary study that we did with Younger and Associates. It's part of the redevelopment plan. And as you'll notice on this, that we can see that 18.6% of the people surveyed in the parish, it was done randomly, but scientifically extracted from the number of participants in there, and I'll go into a little bit on this next sheet. 18.6% of the people surveyed work in the city of Monroe. So, it's very important, the things that happen in this area. And of course, we have 71% of our people surveyed work in Morehouse Parish, and they spend a significant amount of their money in the Monroe area. So, there is a large interchange between the two parishes. And on the second sheet, there, and this shows kind of the way this is scientifically arrived, that this shows a distribution of how the surveys were completed, the number, where the people surveyed on that lived. So, it shows that the distribution of those surveys was pretty representative of the entire parish. And that's been one of the challenges of this particular study, is that while the city of Monroe, I mean, the city of Bastrop, and I believe the city of Monroe was assisting with that, the city of Bastrop was the recipient of this initial study that was also funded from Louisiana Economic Development, that we, we know that we have to cover the whole parish, because the health of the parish is important to the way Bastrop functions. So, we're kind of, we go parish-wide, and as we are working through this, we're, we have a new website that we're putting some of the data on, so please visit the new website for Morehouse Economic Development, which is prominently linked to the city of Bastrop's website also, which, you know, I think that as we work through the process, we'll be getting more data on buildings and sites. Intimerica is helping me put together that. We're looking at improving the building, building and site section of the website as it is now. And I, I think that you may have seen the article also in the newspaper this week about the entry site that's available. And we currently have buildings and sites listed on that. It, it has been debuted, but it was really there for several months, so we've been participating in that. And one of the requests that most site selectors say is that they're, they're getting away from a lot of printed material, everything's kind of going to website and electronic transmissions. So, we're moving forward with improving the way we present ourselves in that manner. I also met with Sharon Swanson with the planning and zoning study, and they're also requesting a list of available buildings and sites in the community. And we're looking in particular in the areas of Bastrop that may already be currently served with infrastructure, and looking at opportunities to develop larger tracks from existing infrastructure. So, we'll be moving along with that, and I had a lengthy meeting with them this month. And I think that most of the time, people ask me, after we get through with this, well, how many businesses have you brought in? Well, I will say that we still have a healthy request. We, we're getting a number of requests. We're still getting inquiries about the mill, which I think the mill, that that process is moving forward, and that those assets are becoming available. And I had a call from a company that was looking for a distribution center this month, and so, as we, the economy, of course, we see it on television every day, the economy's pretty bad right now. And I think that we're, this region, I think as a whole, we're holding together very well, but I think that Morehouse Parish and the city of Bastrop is doing well compared to the national economy. So, I, I really think that we are moving along prosperous, and I look for a good future. And I appreciate, I always appreciate the support from the city of Bastrop and mayor's office and the city council, and I really don't see that changing anytime. Look forward to healthy continuation of that relationship.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. King? I do appreciate working with you. I know that you work hard, and this is a tedious process, but let us remain optimistic about our city, because we're going to be fine.
I believe that.
Thank you, Ms. King. Item number 19. Mark Vareen.
Welcome to the new councilman, and you too, Mayor.
Thank you.
I was, I used to give a little update on the Main Street program, and since all of y'all are new, I went ahead and put up here earlier, a little split CD of what the program's about. It goes in your computer, and it'll, it has a narrative and stuff. It's about three or four minutes long. It's just kind of informative and a neat thing. I've got extras, if you ever wanted them to pass out or something like that, kind of show your city. It shows a lot of the before and after things that have been done. So, just something to kind of let you know what we're doing. We've got, I was glad to say, we had a, someone that filled out the grant application through the state program for facade restorations. It'll be on a main corridor coming into town, so we're optimistic that they're going to get funded. The state really liked the project and saw the importance of it because of the location. So, haven't heard back yet. It'll be another month or so before they actually review all the grants. We are in competition with all the other 28 Main Street towns, but it's a good project. There's also a, another project that would make a huge impact, and they're doing it on their own. They're not waiting on any kind of grant, so we're anxious to see about that. It would improve the, a whole entire street tremendously. It's one of the last buildings that has not been restored yet. So, still waiting on the final drawings and stuff to come back for them. So, when the, when all that's finalized, I'll be, I can tell you more about it, but it'll be a big improvement for us, for sure. We've got some summer events planned for the kids. We've done some, we partnered with Main Street and the visitor's center, partnered with the library to show summer movies. They don't have the facility to show them, so Main Street, we operate the visitor's center, so they're having them there, and that's been a big success. There's the big drop-down screen, 10 by 10 screen, so the kids have been coming to that. That's been something neat. Keep our kids in town and give them something to do. We're going to continue that on even through the holidays with some Christmas movies and stuff like that for the kids, so kind of something fun for them. One thing I got here, oh, since last council meeting, we had, were awarded new side, a grant for new sidewalks. Gosh, Mayor, all, six years ago, I believe. And then Katrina messed us up, and Eric, it was one thing, that was the main holdup, and they had to be redrawn and stuff like that. But they have, this is from DOTD, that the, they have an assigned letting date of September 09, so it's been a long time coming. And that'll be the sidewalks, not directly facing the courthouse, but the, the side ones, and they are wrecked. In some cases, they're very uneven and, and just unattractive too. So, and a lot of people walk to come downtown and stuff. So, we're anxious to finally get that project going. It might be a mess for a while, but it'll, it'll well be worth it when it's over with. So, hopefully, you'll be seeing some construction there soon. It's kind of what we've got going on right now. I do want to say I look forward to working with y'all. One of the, with all the other Main Street meetings, of course, we have quarterly meetings and stuff, and they've always been jealous of how qua, we've always gotten along, the Main Street program, the council's been so supportive of Bastrop Main Street. So, I look forward to us continuing that relationship, and, because in some towns, they, they conflict a lot, and nothing ever gets accomplished. So, we've always been real successful, and I'm looking forward to that, too.
Thank you so much.
Y'all ever have any questions about what's going on, programs or something? I've left my card up in there, too. Please don't hesitate to call me.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any questions for Mr. Vareen? Thank you.
Thanks.
For your, the job that you do, Mark. Item number 20. Mr. Litchfield, Bastrop Wings Aviation Program.
Good evening to y'all, and welcome again, all of you.
Thank you.
We've met during the campaign and transition and stuff, and I'm working with Mr. Johnson. But my name's Steve Litchfield. I'm the director of Bastrop Wings Aviation Group. The Wings Group's into its third year in Bastrop. We currently have 18 people signed up. We've got a lot of supporters in the audience, and here are a couple, a couple of the youth.
Let's ask the supporters to stand up, Mr. Litchfield, and recognize them. Thank you. Go ahead.
A lot of, a lot of support, not so much tonight, but third year in the program. You were familiar with it, and been out at the airport a couple of times. We're a little sluggish getting started this year, but we've been working with Fort Polk on the return, returning veterans. And that program is going great. In fact, Dorita Airport in Dorita, Louisiana, is offering Saturday classes to the veterans and the high school students there, too. So, I'll be going down next Wednesday for three, four days, and then we're going to go over to DOTD in Baton Rouge and talk to, talk to them about some funding and support, and try to get two. But never to forget, the roots are in Bastrop for the Bastrop Wings program, and will always be. And Mayor Mayo, these, these gentlemen are from Monroe, came up to Bastrop, so it's that inter, interaction. It's pretty cool. We've helped a couple of people go to college. We're, we got our 501(c)(3) tax exempt status, and you all have packets that were given to the city for y'all. If you can review that, there's copies of all that stuff in there, and some of our history. We've got Super Support, Southern University, LADOTD, Virginia Tech, Fort Polk, Southland Aviation here in Bastrop Airport. And what we're here tonight for is simply to ask for your continuing support for the Bastrop Wings program. The previous administration had, had given us access to a little hangar space and a little ALCO office that Ms. Olive's familiar with, and we'd like to get your blessing to continue our program and grow. And we'll support you any way we can.
Thank you so much, Mr. Litchfield. Thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Litchfield?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Ms. Armstrong.
What's the age requirement?
We're not going to have one.
Not going to have one.
We were trying, we were trying like junior and senior high school, because if they want to go on to Southern University, the program has to be completed in, within 24 months. It's an 18-month program. So, we were targeting the seniors, because they'd be getting out of high school and could go finish their, finish up at Southern University, which would be about 14 more months. And that's why we were targeting that. But as far as, as far as gathering interest, we'll go with anybody, and also people out of Monroe, and I'll get with your staff down there, if that's okay, and promote it that way, too. So, we won't, we won't really have any age limit. We have a waiver of liability that the parents sign if the child's under 18, that protect, and that holds the city harmless. I believe Mr. Lawrence had a copy of that. And it's, it's very protective, so, I mean, there's nothing like, the city's going to get sued or anything. God forbid something happens, so we're pretty much covered, up and running. A little sluggish this year, but we're going to get it off the ground again.
Okay. Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Litchfield. Are there any other questions for you? Thank you, and I salute these young men. Item number 21. The appointment of two commissioners to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Two of our council members served on this commission and aren't able to hold two offices at the same time. So, it is my recommendation, in replacement of these two council members who served on this board, to ask Mr. Tim Daniels, Mr. Daniels, would you stand up and be acknowledged? Longtime businessman. And Mr. Dave Williams. Most of us are familiar with Mr. Dave Williams. They will replace the two council members who are rotating off the board. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept these appointments.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept these appointments.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion and appointment, I accept it. Item number 22. The appointment of a city clerk, and it's my pleasure to recommend Ms. Sandra Goldman to be reassigned as city clerk. She's been a tremendous asset as we get off to a good start, Ms. Goldman. And at this time, thank you so much for your hard work, and then the hard work of your department. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept this appointment.
Make a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointment, I accept it. Item number 23. The appointment of two commissioners to the Morehouse Sales Tax Commission. It is my recommendation to this board of all the men, men, persons, men, it's all men, that's okay, to recommend Ms. Sandra Goldman, our clerk, and Brandon Comer, our financial advisor for the Sales Tax Commission. I'll entertain a motion to accept this appointment.
I saw a move.
Okay. We have multiple movements here.
Second.
And second by Mr. Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointment, I accept it. Item number 24. The appointment of city attorneys. It is my recommendation to reappoint Mr. Douglas Lawrence as our civil attorney. At this time, I will entertain.
I saw a move, that we accept.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. John Bentley, as our prosecutor. I'll entertain a motion to, to accept this appointment.
Make a motion.
A second.
Motion and second. Also, while, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointment, I accept it. Thank you so much. Also, let me take this as an opportunity. I see a need to, to add a third attorney for promoting our economic development. This need emerged as, as we worked through the campaign. It has emerged again through the transition, so I ask that you, you start thinking about the research that I'm doing, because we do need economic development, and sometimes, some things cannot wait. We will lose opportunities if we miss the boat at being able to accommodate the paperwork and volume involved in this procedure. Item number 25. The appointment of a city auditor. It is my recommendation to this board of all the persons to accept Ms. Cindy Haynes with heels and zina. I'll entertain a motion to accept this appointment.
I saw a move.
Moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointment, I accept it. Ms. Cindy Haynes, thank you so much. Item number 26. It is my recommendation to appoint Mr. Howard Locke as mayor pro temp for this next fiscal year. At this time, I will entertain a motion for this acceptance.
A motion.
Second.
Properly motion and second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Locke.
Thank you.
You didn't decline, right? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Item number 27. Appoint two members to the Morehouse Parish Economic Development District. It is my recommendation to recommend Mr. Ivory Smith with the contingency that, that we will replace him. He has been a longtime businessman. businessman and he's, he's willing to serve until we find a replacement. And Ms. K. King, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Properly motion and second. Thank you so much. Normally, we have citizens' comments. It was left off the agenda. If we have any citizens who wish to, to make a presentation to this council, Mr. Charles Van, would you come introduce yourself and state your business?
Yeah, Charles Van, uh, to you, mayor, and your committee there. Um, I'm here on, concerning the historic district downtown Bastrop. I was here, I think, the last meeting with Mayor Hawken, but there was a transition going on, one coming, going out, one coming in. So I'm here today. Uh, I was denied, um, hmm, the traveling motion sign was in question about, and, and so they denied that sign and asked me to, uh, replace it, remove it. Basically, in here it say, uh, replace it. And it's come to be an expensive sign. And I'm asking that, I'm asking for appeal on that because of the fact that, there's many reasons that I'm just going to give you mine. That sign was put up based upon what I was looking at around town, not at the audience, because we hadn't been served one when that sign went up. Uh, there had been a lack of communication within the historic district and the business downtown. Uh, any merchant downtown can tell you that. Here lately, we've been getting a lot of information because we was in the blind on what we can do and what we couldn't do. But when we began to do things that violate the audience, then we get mail. Uh, we get, um, denied for putting up certain things. In, in particular, advertising. It seemed to be a restriction on how, what we can do and how we can do it. And I'm not here to discredit the historic district at all. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a wonderful thing. But in my last two months in, doing a little study on this, I think the order was written in nineteen ninety-nine. That was ten years ago. So things unchanged drastically. The economy unchanged a lot. So people are dictating their business on how they can advertise. And in the audience, it showed that certain thing cannot be. But when I look at Rose Theater, and I done signed in on some of these historic meetings. We were asked to have a special meeting and we did. And when I looked at Rose Theater, this, it had the same traveling sign. Now, maybe it cost fifty thousand dollars, but it's a still motion sign. And so with that in mind, I'm asking you and your, uh, city council here to consider how that order was written. And does it open it up and ask you to open it up so that everyone can have a, an opportunity to run their business? It's not like business is open on an everyday basis. They are more closing. And so we are fighting to try to stay open. And if you notice downtown, people are advertising in a way that they can do that. And they doing it from what they know and how they can keep their doors open. And so that was my reason for being here tonight, concerning that historic district and how they, the restriction on how we advertise.
Okay. Thank you for, for your expression, Mr. Van. I, I know that you have been in meetings and the historic society is governed by a board. And, and, and I would be remiss if I told you I will sit here and overturn that regulation without proper due process. Therefore, I'm going to ask our attorney to, to speak to the, the natural order and respect to how this is done.
Mayor, I think I had the opportunity to see some correspondence that was written by Mr. Van, uh, here recently, within the past week and maybe before that. I remember when you came to the council last, last month. Um, and, and from what I appreciated in reading that correspondence, you not only, uh, registered your complaint, if you will, about being prohibited from having that sign, you also made reference to the, to the Rose Theater. But, but in the end, what I saw was a request for this body to basically rewrite the, uh, the regulations. That's what I appreciated it to say. Uh, I did not see, and, and maybe I, maybe it, it is in existence, but I haven't seen it. I did not see anything about an appeal. Now, that's very important because there are time limitations that apply. And I think the historic district rendered its ruling, I believe, in early May. I do not know whether or not an appeal was registered of their decision. And that has to be submitted within a certain period of time. And also, as I appreciate it, once that appeal, if it, if it is a legitimate appeal, made timely, there is a ten-day window, I think, within which, uh, this council has to set up a meeting as, as, as a body that hears the appeal. So I guess my question at this point is whether or not there was an actual appeal submitted in writing, because even though I've seen some writings, I have not seen an appeal. And I'm not saying that one was not filed, Mr. Van. I'm just saying I haven't seen one. So that, that would be my question. And I think that would dictate where we go from this point in terms of an appeal. Now, a completely separate issue that Mr. Van is talking about is whether or not this mayor and board of all the persons want to revisit the actual provisions of the ordinance itself. And that is your legal prerogative to either revisit it or to say no. Uh, but you, this body has the absolute right to, to write ordinances and policies that govern what takes place within the city.
Okay.
Last thing I would say, I think the, at least the legal justification for the issue about the Rose Theater is that it, it was grandfathered. In other words, that sign and that usage existed prior to that ordinance being adopted, the historic district ordinance being adopted by the city. Uh, therefore, it is legally exempt from coverage by the historic district ordinance, but everything else after that is covered.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Van. I think it would be proper that I would have time to, to research everything to see if the dates are in synchrony before I go in further. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, for your recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. Any other citizens who would like to address this board of all the persons? At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Oh, just a minute.
On, on number twenty-seven, I don't think they actually voted for the extra two appointments.
Oh, okay. Okay.
On the Morehouse Economic Development, on Mr. Smith and Ms. K. King.
Okay, thank you.
Have been voted yes.
Okay. Let's take a vote. I'll entertain a motion on item number twenty-seven, the appointment of two members to the Morehouse Economic Development District. I recall saying Mr. Smith, Ivory Smith, with the contingency that we replace him. He's willing to serve at this particular timeframe. And Ms. K. King, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
Moved by Ms. Locke and second. Thank you so much. And thank you, Ms. Goldman. Well, at this time, I will entertain a motion to, oh, wait a minute. Okay. Do we need to expand the agenda?
No, no, it's the actual vote.
Yeah, you didn't say it. Everybody.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Appointment, finally, I accepted. Are we good now, Ms. Goldman? Okay. All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Thank you so much for coming.